Okay, I think all the council people are here. So it's 7:02. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. It's Tuesday, May 12th. It's 7:02 PM. And we are having a virtual meeting through Zoom. So Candace will start with a roll call. Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Here. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. Following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. We have the council minutes from April 28th. We have payment of bills. We have the financial reports for April. I have no appointments to boards or commissions tonight. We have license with, there's a couple of licenses. And then there is information from the License Committee. Options to temporarily amend municipal codes as they apply to alcohol licensing. So if there is no further discussion, we'll take a motion on those.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Eileen to approve consent calendar is presented. We'll vote, Candace. Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I note that Blake Stevens is here as a Boy Scout. And he and his dad, Randy, are here. I don't think you guys want to speak. You're just watching, right? Shake your head yes if you're just watching. All right, well, there we go. Shake your head yes if you're just watching. Um, let's see, I think the only other person I have here would be Chris Wright. And Chris, are you here for a later agenda item? The Roundtree Branch Stream Bank Repairs Grant?
I am just here representing, yep.
Okay, thank you, that's what I assume. And so we have no citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. I will say, just about an hour ago, I saw a note that tonight at dusk and until, I think, 10:30, the M is going to be lit blue in honor of National Healthcare Worker Week. I believe it's, I've seen it called National Healthcare Worker. I've seen it called National Nurses Week. I've seen a lot of different iterations of that. But Adam, do you know anything more about that, if you want to say?
Nope, I think Jody kind of filled me in on that as well, that that's kind of the information you said is what I know.
And I believe that it's Southwest Health, it's UW Platteville, and it's an implement dealer. Sky Implement. That is, they must be providing the light, something. I don't know how that, but it's supposed to be for a while. So I just wanted to shout out about that. And also then, just to shout out a thanks to our healthcare worker. All right, we'll move on to reports. Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition.
Library Board, Klein?
No addition.
The Water and Sewer Finance Reporter in your packet, the Airport Financial Report is in your packet, and the Department Progress Reports are in the packet. Anybody with any comments on any of those? Because I do have a comment, I want to shout out to our Senior Center and John Meidinger. When I read through the list of volunteers, I at first was gonna cite all of those volunteers, but I won't. I would encourage you all to look through there. The Senior Center itself is closed, but they certainly are not closed in terms of action. And they have incredible numbers of volunteers helping out. So as you read that and then you see some of those folks, please give them a pat on the back for all the help that they're. I guess then we're gonna move into action items. So the first action item is resolution. It's the 2022 Roundtree Branch Stream Bank Repairs Grant. And this is a grant application. So Howard, I think that's you.
Yes, thank you. Every even year, DNR accepts grant applications for different environmental projects. The maximum award is $150,000 matching grant, $300,000 total project. In 2018, we received $75,000 matching grant towards a $150,000 project to make stream bank repairs. Normally, the grant is due in April, but due to the situation, the grant submission date is May 15th. The one requirement is the local governing body must acknowledge the submission and pledge the local grant funding. As we discussed last time, there were seven locations identified. And what we've done is, in the new packet, you see the four locations that we are recommending. Delta 3 has done some sharpening of the pencil with the scope, reducing the scopes for each of these slightly. You can see the new numbers in highlighter on the agenda for sites 2, 4, 6, and 7. All of those together will come up to a full $300,000. We would be recommending that the project take place in calendar year 2022. So what we're doing is we're asking that you recommend approval of the resolution. I believe it's 20-13, I believe, is what it is. 20-, yes, 20-13 for this local match.
Dan, do you have anything to add?
I'd just like to add a couple of things. One, by approving the resolution to submit the grant does not commit you to actually having to execute the grant. So for example, if you start running through your budget this summer, and the grant would be successful in being awarded the grant early this fall, and you determine that the matching funds are not available, you do not have to accept the grant. So that's kind of important. The second thing is, is obviously, we got the cost estimates down to the magic number of $300,000. We did that by doing some minor scope changes. And then in site number 7, we shortened that one, the length of that one. That was where the majority of the cost came from, was site number 7, which is just upstream of the J and N Bridge. But ultimately, the, just by minimizing scope, or minimizing the scope a little bit, we have not deviated from the actual goal, just protect the stream bank. So I mean, even though there are minor changes, the goal of protecting the stream bank is still there.
Okay, Chris, is there anything you would like to say?
Nope, PCA is in full support.
Okay, and I'll start around for questions. Jason, do you have questions of Howard, or Dan, or even Chris?
No questions.
Okay, Ken, do you have questions of Howard, Dan, or Chris?
Either one, or all of them. My first question is, is there a time that you're looking at here as far as meeting a goal? What I'm talking about is, are you meeting something for 25-year storm? What's your goal?
The purpose of this particular grant submission is for stream bank protection. What we do is, it's mainly for the five to 25-year storm design. We install riprap from the bottom of the stream up to approximately two feet above the normal water level, and then we slope the banks back and protect them. So we're looking at not the, we're not, if we get a big 100-year storm, obviously, the banks are gonna probably see some erosion. But the idea here is for the storms that occur on a more regular basis. Yeah.
What I'm getting at is that in the last few years, we've had increased storms, increased flowage, and whether we should be designing the practices so that it can withstand a greater flowage. And also, in looking at the location of these places, there are, many of them are close to highways, trails, so that we've been recently designing things like the bridge down that, you know, that bridge we got from the county, and so on down the list, and then the mineral street and so on. So the design was, in my opinion, recent, and so on. Looking at whether or not we have enough prevention into design as far as protection against problems which are likely to come up in the future.
I think as we get, if you're awarded the grant, that's definitely something that we can look into. The best protection would be to riprap from the bottom of the stream to the top of the bank. That's probably your best protection. However, we found out with this year's project that that cost is quite high, and so we had to back off. So it's a matter of balancing designing for 100-year flow versus a 25-year flow and cost. Very comparable to when we're designing storm sewer or best management practices. It would be great to design for the 100-year, and awesome to be able to build those, but the cost effectiveness is just not there. So while I agree with what you're saying, Ken, it's just trying to protect what we have without getting, without spending all the money in one location, that's what we had to balance.
Well, I was looking at previous construction. It said a number of those locations failed, and so I was hoping to get construction at a higher level of performance. That's the end of my questions.
Okay.
Thanks.
Robin?
I don't have any questions.
Eileen?
No questions.
Kathy?
No questions, just a comment to Dan. Good job with the numbers on number 7.
And Isaac?
No questions.
Okay, and thank you, Dan, for clarifying that if we are awarded the grant, we get a second chance to say yes, we can take it or not, especially during these times of who knows what happens with the budget in the upcoming months. So we, this grant application to submit for 2022 Roundtree Bank, Roundtree Branch Stream Bank Repairs. That's a little hard to say. Is there a motion?
I move to approve resolutions 20, what's the, on this one?
13.
13. Commencing, committing to a local match of up to $150,000 for stream bank repairs at sites 2, 4, 6, and 7 as listed in the grant application. The total project cost will be $300,000.
I stuck at that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Isaac to approve Resolution 20, Resolution 20-13, to submit this grant for stream bank repairs. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the 2019 carryovers. These are budget carryovers to 2020. And Nicola, are you handling this?
I am.
Nicola.
Can you hear me okay?
I can. Can everybody hear Nicola?
Okay. So each year, we review our projects, our CIP projects, early in the year usually, and other line items in the budget. And departments can bring forward a request to carry over certain unspent funds if they have a project that didn't complete, or if they have a special reason for requesting those funds to be carried over. And staff review those requests and then bring them forward to the council. So this year, we're a little later due to coronavirus in reviewing these requests. But you can see from the staff note that the CIP funds being requested to carry over are 358,761, and the general fund amount being requested to carry over is $22,041. And hopefully, you can see the attachment that went with the staff note. And I'm just gonna briefly review these items with you in case there are any questions. So the first item is the City Hall remodel. And of the funds budgeted in 2019, there were $52,877 remaining unused, which we would like to carry over for the Phase 2 of the City Hall remodel. The 2019 budget included a, excuse me, a park tractor mower to be replaced, and that did not take place in 2019. So those funds are being requested to carry over. There was also a pavement router that was budgeted in the CIP for $16,800. You can see from the notes there that a dust kit was purchased for $5,000, and that extended the life of the router. So there were some funds that were available to carry over. And those are to be put towards several items, and we'll review those at the end. There was a replacement of a two-and-a-half-ton plow truck for $170,000. That order did get placed in 2019, but the suppliers, there's actually two suppliers involved in that order, were behind, so it didn't get invoiced until early in the year of this year. So we need to carry those funds over. There was $30,000 of sidewalk repair budgeted, and $6,587 was spent. So there's $23,413 remaining to be carried over. And then highway striping, similarly, there was $30,000 budgeted. $20,000 of that came from a carryover from some unused funds in 2018. And then we levied $10,000 highway striping, and that money was not used in 2019. So we would like to carry those funds over. I'm just gonna pause there for a second, just to make mention of the sidewalk repair and highway striping. We're carrying over funds in these two line items. This may be when we are budgeting for 21 for these items that we may be able to utilize between the funds being carried forward from 2019, and then what we also budgeted in 2020 for these line items. We may be able to get a breather on these items in 2021's budget, which may help us in a tight budget year due to coronavirus. Moving on from there, the Roundtree Branch that you just heard about, the levy portion of that project was $25,833 with contributions from the grant and then from some other partners. And so the amount that the city would need to carry over would be $25,833. And then finally, in the CIP projects, there was, the 2019 budget actually included the cost of the design phase for the Business Highway 151 Safety Improvement Project. But we actually postponed the design phase of that project to 2020. During the budget for 2020, we did allocate $15,000 of that levy on the design phase and put that towards the Fire Department Conceptual Plan. So in one sense, we didn't necessarily need to include that in this action from the council because it was already acted on during the budget. But I think it's just good for clarity to show that $15,000 is being carried over here. So I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions on the CIP portion of the carryovers.
Jason, any questions on the CIP portion of the carryover?
No questions.
Ken, any questions on the CIP portion of the budget carryover?
The plow truck, the plow truck is just with the front blade. There's no wing to the truck.
Howard might be able to answer that.
Yes, it also includes the wing blade as well. The issue is that we ordered it in summer of 2019, but because of supply chain issues, it didn't actually go through the supply chain until January. And it's, I think it's sitting in the dealership, getting ready, final prep to be delivered to us.
So it does have a wing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Robin, any questions on the CIP carryovers? Eileen, any questions on the CIP carryovers?
Yeah, I'm curious on the pavement router. We extended the life by using a dust kit, but it says unused funds requested towards mini excavator, skid loader, and flatbed truck. Were those items in the original CIP, were they requested and just not approved?
They were not. And if you look below, under the general fund requests, we're gonna see where there's some, there's some other funds available that, if those are approved, combined with the pavement router remaining funds would provide $41,000. And that would fund the three items. If you look in the box below, so there's $10,000 that's needed to cover a 2020 item that was actually more expensive than was budgeted. So there was a $10,000 additional cost on that flatbed truck, which we would need coverage for. The mini excavator is $20,000. And that was something that was being rented at the end of last year and the beginning of this year. It's used both in the cemeteries and for other street projects. And because of the coronavirus, we went ahead and purchased that. We were not sure how much we might need that, rather soberly, you know, for the cemetery. So we did go ahead and buy that, but we are still asking the council to sort of retroactively approve that $20,000. And then the skid loader upgrade would be $11,000. And those three items make up $41,000, and they would be covered by the funds from the dust kit, I'm sorry, from the pavement router, and then the other two items that I'll get to in just a minute.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, any questions?
No.
Okay, Isaac, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, so CIP, now we'll go on to general fund. Nicola?
Okay, so as I just mentioned, there were some general fund requests as well. We have $7,841 of unused grant funds for the Senior Center, which we'd like to carry over. And then there's also $10,000 of unspent funds in the 2019 Street Maintenance Outlay Line item in the budget. And that would be $10,000 towards the $41,000 below. And then also, there was a little bit more than $4,200 available in the hot mix, Street Maintenance Line item. But only $4,200 of that is needed to be carried over to make up the balance of the $41,000. So the general fund request totaled $22,041. And I will entertain any questions on the whole kit and kaboodle.
Okay, Jason, any questions on the general fund carryover or on any of the carryover issues?
No questions.
Ken, any questions on the general fund or any others?
No question.
Robin, any questions?
No question.
Eileen, any questions?
No questions.
Kathy, any questions?
No questions.
And Isaac, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, so we've now gone through the 2019 carryovers to 2020. And without questions, we have a council member who wants to suggest some action.
Barb, I would make a motion to approve the carryover of $358,761 in the CIP fund and $22,041 in the general fund per the attached schedule.
We have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to approve the 2019 carryovers to 2020 as presented, both from the CIP and the general fund. Candace will vote. Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, that concludes the action portion of our agenda. We'll move on now to information and discussion. And we have one item there, Contract 7-20, Street Maintenance. And so Howard?
Yes, thank you. Annually, we've done a street maintenance using the estimated $120,000 in wheel tax funding. Recent years, we've only done the thin overlays, a 3/4-inch overlay over the pavement. It enhances the ride and delays deterioration. We're going to continue to do that for selected streets. The other technique that we haven't done much of lately, but is a good technique, is called mill and out the existing. They received a little over $91,000 for a two-year funding cycle. And the selection committee split the funding evenly among 10 communities, including Platteville. So I'm recommending that we use our allocation of $9,100 to supplement our wheel tax funds. Just for everybody's information, this is the first time since I've been here that we've received that funding. So I'm pretty happy about that. We did open the one bid for street maintenance. So I'm basically recommending that we split it half and half. Half for our traditional thin overlays on Pioneer Road, Millennium Drive, Oak Street, Preston, and Sylvia. And then I'm recommending Main Street from Chestnut to Washington for that milliner overlay. We are, with that, we would be slightly over by about $9,500. But I believe that we are under budget in our other street projects enough to be able to cover that shortfall. So I'll be recommending a word to Iverson Construction for the proposed streets as listed.
Okay, I guess we're ready for a round of, round robin here to see if anybody has questions. Jason, do you have any questions about milling and overlay or the thin overlay projects? Not for action tonight, just if you have any questions.
Yeah. What project specifically, Howard, did you have some savings that you were planning to use for this?
We're talking about the, all of the current street construction projects. When you put them all together, we're under budget enough where we can afford to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Ken, any questions on this uh, street maintenance?
Well, I have a question. As far as Grant County, where did you get the ninety one thousand from? The state of Wisconsin?
Yes, um, Grant County receives an allocation every two years in the state budget biennium. Uh, it's around ninety thousand dollars. Uh, they have a committee that um looks at grant proposals and then they select uh, communities for funding. And uh, this year miraculously, we were one of ten communities funded.
What about that two thousand dollars they give us?
That's a different set of money and
Part of that money is coming from the city itself.
Correct, there's, there's a matching grant, uh, we put up two thousand dollars and the county puts up two thousand dollars. That one we have received every year.
So this ninety one thousand, the county's been receiving something like this for a number of years and Platteville has not been receiving the money? Is that correct or is this new money, the ninety one thousand?
No, this is, this is annual or biennial monies that are allocated to the county and there is a committee that does a selection process. Uh, we've submitted for uh, grant allocations in the past and have been denied. Like I say, this is the first time in my tenure that we've uh, gotten any funding from this.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, it must have been your smile.
Yes, I can't believe it. Howard, what are you saying to them?
Right, Robin, any questions on uh, street maintenance contract?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, Kathy? You have to unmute yourself. Any questions? Kathy? Okay, Isaac, any questions?
Uh, just one question, um, Howard. So I see in one of the projects you have would be for Oak Street. Um, just want to make sure that if we were to do this, that that project would be done after the parking lot was reconstructed, so we're not putting all the truck weights, machinery weights onto a reconditioned street right away?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, this is not on for action tonight. It'll be on for action at our meeting on May twenty sixth. So that uh, concludes the information and discussion items. Now we'll move right into the work session item, which is about the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer on Water Street and this uh, is basically from the area of Pine Street south to the rock, to the Roundtree branch. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and Howard and Dan, are you both on this?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Dan's going to do most of it. Uh, I, I'm looking to try to share my screen with everybody to go through that. Uh, i- is it on the screen for everyone?
Yes, it is.
Yay. So Dan, go ahead and take it away. I'll jump in if we need to.
Sure. Um, in Howard's uh, staff report for the work session, I think he kind of gave a little bit of a primer um, about this project. Um, basically what we want to do is the different items we want to kind of go over tonight about the Water Street drainage corridor, talk about the current condition and concerns, talk about some different design considerations that we've done to date. Uh, look at some project options. We have three different options and then the biggest thing is looking at costs and then at the end asking any questions, which there will be a lot of questions. This is the first time that many of you are going to be hearing about this. Um, this is not something that uh, Howard and I believe that needs to be done next year, but this is more of bringing this to your attention so that you can start thinking about it and planning for the future, whether it's two years, five years, ten years, uh, maybe not more than ten years or sooner.
Please, please not more than ten.
Yeah. Okay, so the first thing to talk about is the current condition and concerns. And um, I apologize for the pictures. It's a, it's a long stretch and I was trying to not got a lot of slides and so trying to condense them here a little bit. Um, but you can see on your screen, uh, the existing culvert starts at the Roundtree Branch, um, just behind the Super Eight Motel, runs under uh, the Super Eight Parking Lot, runs over the former Ed's Cafe Parking Lot, under Business One Fifty One, over by Dairy Queen, and then continues running under everybody, all the private business parking lots from uh, Country and Suites, Century Twenty One, Chiropractor Associates, um, through uh, Quick Trips Parking Lot, underneath Edward Jones Nutrition World Building, and then connects to the existing drainage way that is located behind Wonder Loop and um, the CRMG Building. That's the commodities group there. And then we also have an existing culvert that goes underneath the Pine Street and Water Street intersection. The part that is under the Clarity Clinic, um, I'm not sure of the age of it, but it's definitely newer construction, but the portion that's under Pine Street, um, I found a plan from nineteen thirty eight and it was existing then, so uh, we're looking at something that's at least eighty years old. It's surprisingly own, in okay shape, but there are definitely some cracks and water coming through it and whatnot. So some notable deficiencies. Um, so at Water Street, um, the discharge is submerged and there's no end wall. So this is an issue with hydraulics with the water in it all the time. Uh, the next is, um, this is a transition from the metal pipe that's at the end to a section of box culvert that's underneath the old Ed's Cafe Parking Lot. You can see the debris that's in hang on top of the uh, the, the wall there. And basically that's an evidence of surcharging. I think if you click one more time, Howard, another picture pops up from the other direction. Now you can see that, and then you can see this is coming from the other direction. So you can see that the water um, through this area, um, basically it's filling up the entire culvert, um, evidence of the debris being stuck on top of the, the structure itself. And then um, we have water sitting in the bottom all the time and in that water, there's also debris. Um, I think in this section, there was minnows crawling or swimming up it, so um, it's a submerged all the time, which also reduces capacity. Um, now we're looking at a section in between Dairy Queen and Country and Suites. Um, from Dairy Queen all the way up to the end, it's all metal pipe. Um, started being installed uh, late seventies, early eighties. And the, this is where the, it's, it's hard because obviously it's dark and we're trying to take pictures in the dark with a flashlight on it. But in this location, the bottom is uh, missing and what you're seeing here are um, debris, uh, mainly rocks that have been caught on in the voids that are in the bottom of it. Um, what saves this is that it's sitting on solid bedrock. And so the water has a tendency, when it goes underneath the culvert, it just runs along the bedrock. Um, so that's kind of nice, so we don't have big voids in it, um, but uh, it, it's also an issue. Um, here's another picture up by Century Twenty One, um, showing where all the, you know, you can see uh, the pieces of metal that are actually starting to work their way up um, from the bottom of the culvert. What we noticed is that every single time that you could almost see um, where they left off from one year to the next to extend this culvert. Um, you would have a change, you have a, have a gap like that, a, a joint. Um, you would see different types of material and then there was always be a grade change. Um, where it would get a little bit steeper for a while and every time there was a grade change, that's where the water rushing over it has eaten away at the bottom of the culvert. I don't know if there was a lot of planning involved in this culvert. I think they, they picked the size, it worked. And then as they developed the, the corridor, they just kept adding on to it. Um, the next one, this is uh, at the corner of Quick Trip. It's in the far left hand of your screen. Um, this appears to be right underneath their little stormwater pond that's at the corner of their building. It looks to me like when they were building uh, Quick Trip, they might have driven an excavator over the top of it and it is now crushed. Um, so uh, when you walk through this area, um, I'm not a very tall person. Um, but uh, in this area here, I had to duck. Most of, most of the way I could walk with a little bit of a hunch, but here, um, I had to, you actually have to bend over to get through it. Um, and then of course, we have the um, Edward Jones Building where it goes actually underneath the building. This is a metal pipe that's underneath um, the building itself. Uh, that's not a good situation. Um, next slide is the uh, entrance to the culvert. Um, there's no head wall, um, which is an issue with eroding around the pipe and there is a lot of debris. A lot of that comes from what's been dumped in that drainage swale that's between um, Edward Jones and Pine Street. And I think that's might be the next slide, might be a little better picture of that. Nope, I skipped that one. Um, and then obviously we have the box culvert underwater and pine intersection, um, and that was built prior to nineteen thirty eight. So um, onto design considerations. So these are things that we took into account um, when we were coming up with design, preliminary design and cost estimates. So what we're looking at doing is a concrete box culvert uh, versus a corrugated metal pipe. Um, we're looking at something that is ten foot wide by seven foot high. Um, so it's a very large box culvert. It's longer lasting than the corrugated metal pipe. Um, obviously it's structurally stronger than CMP because it's a rigid pipe versus a flexible pipe. And then one of the nice things about it, and, and these pictures probably don't do justice to it, but we're oversizing, we want to oversize the box culvert so that it can be rehabilitated in the future. So that basically we could go in there and shotcrete it or put some of the structural concrete in there so that we could actually build a wall inside of it in case it fails so that uh, and you know, we don't, so in fifty, sixty, eighty years, we don't have to worry about it. And the new dimensions of the, the new box culvert would be large enough to convey the design storm. Um, Howard mentioned that the sanitary sewer on Water Street is in poor condition. This is a picture uh, from when we uh, replaced the sanitary sewer in Alden Avenue, made a connection to it. Uh, the contractor actually had to go down and re-dig it because when they put their fern core, their connecting point around uh, the new pipe, it was so cracked that it kept breaking off, so we had them dig, try again. Um, so that is definitely an issue of the condition of the pipe underwater street. And then you can see all the groundwater that's there as well. So if we have a clay tile pipe that's cracked, um, obviously all that water is going somewhere. Um, it's going down the pipe, going to the sewer plant and being treated accordingly. Um, other ish, other things, uh, replace the water main. Um, the Alden to Pine section was installed approximately nineteen eighty one and the pot, Business One Fifty One Alden Avenue was prior to nineteen eighty one. Um, cannot find any information on that. Uh, I don't have any plans and it, but it is unlocated and there was a sidewalk. Um, we're going to replace public and private storm sewers along the way that all connect to this box culvert. And I think the first one up is like an example of a, of a public storm sewer. Be quick, Howard.
Oh, there we go.
There you go. Yep, so that's, so we have storm sewer that's in Water Street that will have to be connected to a uh, a culvert, whether it's put in the same location or not. And then we have the private connections that connect to Country and Suites and parking lots, et cetera. Other miscellaneous design considerations, we need to, when we do this project, um, we need to realize what the impact on Water Street businesses are. Um, if we put it back in the same location, there currently are no easements that I know of. Uh, so we would have to obtain some easements or at least investigate to make sure that we have them. Um, the impact on Water Street, um, you'll see in a mo- few moments that different options, we have uh, work being done on Water Street regardless. Um, impact of natural gas, electric and telecommunications. Century Link has a very large fiber line that runs down Water Street. Um, we would have to coordinate with them. Um, abandonment of the existing culvert. Um, so if we are to move the culvert, uh, for example, if we would move it from its current location out to Water Street, we would have a large void underneath all those buildings, all those parking lots. So we have to figure out a way of either digging it out and filling it in or somehow just filling it in um, without digging it out. So that's definitely something that has to be taken into consideration. So the first options that we have is, this is the, if we had unlimited resources, um, and uh, to do the project in one large phase. So what we would do is we would start at Roundtree Branch. We would run a new box culvert, um, just to the east of Super Eight Motel. Run it coincidentally right through the middle of the Business One Fifty One and Highway eighty eighty one intersection. Um, it lines up perfect. We miss all the islands, we miss all the traffic lights. Um, and then we would run it on the east side of um, Water Street. Um, and then uh, we would replace uh, the water main, oop, yep, there we go. Uh, sanitary sewer and water main. And then because we're going to be putting, bringing utilities in the middle of Water Street, Water Street would end up being completely reconstructed. Um, the, this is the south portion and then the north portion, um, we would continue with the box culvert underwater street. Um, we would replace the culvert under Pine Street and tie into um, a newer uh, corrugated metal pipe that was put in more in the mid eighties that runs behind uh, Subway. We would um, replace the sanitary sewer and water main um, in the street like we did, and then we would also reconstruct Water Street. So this is, oh yeah, and then we'd also regrade the drainage way, um, that runs from Clarity Clinic uh, down to Wonder Loop. When we, by taking all the water out of that drainage way, that drainage way uh, will be able to be more of an engineered swale versus an actual drainage way because it would be picking up um, a, a much decreased volume of water since majority of it can be diverted to Water Street. So then we look at um, option number two. So option number one, you were just because of the nature of it, it was, we've got, uh, we're just gonna disbite it and we're gonna do the project in one single year. Um, so the whole air corridor would be tore up. Now, when we start looking at option two and option number three, uh, what we broke it up into is different phases. So you can see, um, right now we have a phase one, which is to connect to the existing box culvert by Dairy Queen. Um, move it out from that point out to the east side of um, Water Street. Um, and then um, we would replace these proposed uh, the sanitary sewer and water main, very similar to what we did in option one. And because we're still dealing with all of the um, the construction in Water Street, uh, Water Street itself would be fully reconstructed. Phase one, oh yeah, an existing culvert to remain between Roundtree Branch and One Fifty One. Um, we know it, it's undersized, uh, but um, it's, it's in pretty good condition. Um, if it's surcharging, which we have evidence of, um, we don't have any reports of it actually surcharging and reaching the surface, just running completely full. Phase one ends basically at Chiropractor Associates, um, which is uh, between, between there and Century Twenty One. Phase two would pick up there, that would be a following year. Phase two would go all the way down to the Wonder Loop. Um, in this scenario, um, once again, we're going to be putting the box culvert in Water Street. Um, replacing uh, the culvert under Pine Street, that would be a phase three. Um, because phase three goes from Wonder Loop up to Pine Street, replacing the sanitary sewer and watering and reconstructing Water Street and regressing the drainage way as well. With all of these different, by breaking it up into three phases, which means three different years, um, we look at the cost, you'd be saying, thinking, well, it's, it's a shorter distance of, it's a, it's a less scope of work, but we have to make, in order to make things work between one phase and the other, there's a lot of extra pieces that have to go into place here. Um, and the reason why we looked at doing this in, in three phases, uh, option two and option three, is mainly looking at disruption to businesses. Um, so that maybe a business instead of being out, being, having access restricted for the entire summer, you know, for, for a very long summer, um, we would look at doing it for a shorter period in the summer. Um, but there would be construction for three years in a row. Option number two A is very comparable to number two. Um, phase one is the same. We're gonna put the box culvert into Water Street, connect to Dairy Queen. Um, we're gonna replace the sanitary sewer and reconstruct Water Street. What changes for this one is going to be option two A was we would not recall the way up to Pine Street. Um, we would basically leave the culvert under Pine Street. Um, a few years ago, when the DOT redid Water Street, they said that that culvert was good. So maybe it is good. Maybe it's just us looking under, maybe when we go on there and look at it and we see the cracks and the water leaking into it. Um, maybe the DOT knows something that we don't. Um, so we don't replace that culvert under Pine Street and we tie in to the existing drainage swale behind Wonder Loop, um, diverting around Edward Jones Nutrition World Building. So um, we would still replace the sanitary sewer, we would still reconstruct Water Street and we would still and we would still regrade the drainage way. The difference being that we would not install a culvert for that phase three between the Wonder Loop and Pine Street. Option number three, replacing the, the box culvert in the exact same location that it is right now. In my opinion, this is gonna be the most disruption to the existing businesses. But we would connect to the existing box culvert that runs under Business One Fifty One. We would replace the box culvert in the exact same location that it is right now. We would replace the sanitary sewer and water main in Water, in Water Street. But we would only, we would, we would restore only what is disturbed. So this would not be a full reconstruction of Water Street. This would be restore, replace pavements, curb sidewalks, et cetera, that are disturbed. An effort to try to speed up the project in an effort to try to reduce some costs. Phase one and phase two are still at the same location. And then basically, what we're showing here is we're gonna replace the box culvert in the same location, degrade the drainage way, do the water and sewer. The print's kind of small, but just to the left of Edward Jones, we have to figure out what we're going to do in that area. And that's where three options, three A and three B come. So, so this is option three A, this would be with option number three. It's just a way to get around the Edward Jones Nutrition World Building. So basically, as you can see, we would basically make a big U around the building to replace the box culvert under it. Now, by doing this, we're gonna have, there's gonna be some probably oversizing of the pipe in this area because we're adding in a lot of extra restriction through the water flowing through here by doing these big bends. So it looks really good on the piece of paper, but the costs go up because of making these. We have to basically increase the hydraulic capacity. Once again, we're only gonna restore what's, what's disturbed. The next slide, this is the, probably the most interesting slide of them all. It would be an add-on to option number three B. Basically, we would work with the owner of Edward Jones. We would remove the existing building. We would replace the box culvert in the same location. And then redevelop the site, basically build, have, build a new building in its place. And when we look at the costs, the price difference is not that much and whatnot. So just keep that in mind when we jump into that, that, you know, just because the, the price of the box culvert is so much, you would think, why is this even feasible? Well, when we look at the costs, you'll see, it's more expensive, but yet it's not as more, it's not that much more expensive. So on to the costs. And everybody's sitting down, so that's good. Option number one, as you mentioned, completed a single project. We're looking at a price tag of around nine million dollars. Part of the cost, majority of the cost is dealing with the box culvert. Our preliminary cost on a box culvert to purchase it, materials only, is one thousand dollars per foot because of the size of it. And so you start putting in labor and backfill materials. You're looking at something that's in the fifteen hundred to two thousand dollar per range. So that's a pretty hefty cost right there. We're looking at full reconstruction of Water Street, full reconstruction of, full replacement of the water and sewer. And then we also have the cost of trying to figure out what to do with the existing box culvert. Because in this option, the box culvert was being moved from its current location under the parking lots to Water Street. We have to figure out what to do with that void. Whether we excavate it out and backfill it full of gravel or we just, and then restore parking lots or we fill in the large void with a grout of some sort. Option number two, this would be completed as a three-phase project, one phase per year. We're looking at the different costs. This is where you can see that the diff, the, the phases add more cost to it. Adds about six hundred thousand dollars to it. And if you remember, we're not even doing as much box culvert replacement. We're not replacing all the way to Roundtree Branch. But the majority of that cost is due to having to temporary, temporarily connect a lot of things between each phase. Option number two A, this was not going all the way to Pine Street with the box culvert. And you can see there's about a savings of about nine hundred thousand dollars for this, to do that. Phase three, phase two is a little bit more, but then phase three is considerably less because we don't have to worry about the box culvert installation. So option three, with option three A, this is going around the Edward Jones Building. That's a price tag of about a million dollars to go around at Edward Jones Building. Because once again, we're dealing with, with Water Street and a large box culvert. We're looking at about five point eight million dollars to replace it where it's at and going around the Edward Jones Building. And then if we look at option number three with option three B, basically, we add about two hundred thousand dollars onto it. And that's, that includes demolition of the existing building and construction of a new building at about a hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. So, so that one's, this, this is an intriguing option. There's all kinds of questions that come up with tearing down somebody's building and rebuilding it for them. But one of my engineers came up with that option and said, what if we just tore it down and redeveloped the site? And I, we started running the numbers and we were very surprised that by shortening up the length of the box culvert and all the extra, all the extra work that's gonna have to be in that, it was only a couple hundred thousand dollars more. So, as Howard and I had mentioned before, is that obviously, this is something that does not have to be done now. But it is something that needs to be kept in the back of the mind of the council for future budgeting to understand that this project will have to be done at some point in time. We, when we did the Alden Avenue project last year, we did some, I guess, in-place repairs. We poured some concrete in the bottom of the channel to try to, to try to protect it a little bit on some areas where the bottom had rusted out, it was pretty much completely gone. Those repairs, they're, you know, they're a Band-Aid. In time, the water will just work their way around it and probably, you know, work them out. But it does help for now. Helps with some of the hydraulic capacity of the pipe too, makes a little bit smoother bottom. So Howard, is there anything you would like to add?
No, I just wanted to, I wanted to look at the phasing. One, to split up the costs between different years for budgeting purposes. And two, as Dan said, for impacts to the local businesses. You know, if, if one section with one or two businesses is impacted one year, then they're not impacted in years two and three as much, maybe.
Okay, I will start around and ask council members if they have ideas, reactions, questions. So Eileen, I'm gonna start with you because you're the first picture I see on my screen now.
Okay, Barb. My question is, the highway safety improvement project on Highway One Fifty One. We will be doing some work at the intersection with the stoplights, Water and One Fifty One. Does that factor in at all? I mean, are we gonna be ripping up something? And then if we do something underneath that highway, do we have to rip it up again? Or is that just two separate things and it wouldn't affect the drainage area underneath?
Well, the highway safety program money project for next year does not do anything with the drainage. It, it does some minor things to make sure that, that we don't have puddles where, where pedestrian crossings are. But really, it's not doing anything below the surface. If we did option one, it would, it could impact some of the things that are going on. But as Dan said, it, it misses most, all of the, most all of the intersection. You, you'd probably have to replace some, some detection loops and things like that. But even with this highway safety program, you, you wouldn't waste any of that money. Cause really, the safety program is on the outsides of this. It's not in the middle of the intersection.
Okay. And then my other question is, you mentioned Century Link has fiber. Is that, where is it located when you said Water Street?
In, by the Edward Jones Building, it's, and QuickTrip, it's on that side of the street, it'd be on the west side of the street. And then someplace it crosses across, it goes across, excuse me. I found an old improvement plan that showed that somewhere it jumps across to the other side. The only reason why we, I would say we have to coordinate with them is just because, because the box culvert is gonna be so large. I just think that it's just one of those things that if we're anywhere, we're, we're within five or six feet of it, it's gonna have to be looked at and be protected. A lot of the older Century Link cables in town, they are in a clay tile conduit. We found that along City Hall, we found that on Water Street in portions. And so we got within a few feet of it, it would just start breaking down. So I'm just concerned that if we start, you know, getting anywhere close to it, that it's, that we're, they're gonna have issues. So it would just have to be a coordinated effort with them.
I, I, I thought that the large fiber bundle stayed on the west side of the street all the way down through. Cause there's communications manholes in the turn lane and stuff like that. But, but these are very large bundles that connect like nine-one-one service for Cuba City and Dick and Hazel Green and things like that. We, we definitely don't wanna mess with that.
Okay, thanks, that's all I had. Yep, that's it.
Kathy, questions?
Being new to this, the, the question I have is if you're saying that we need to do this in the next five years or less. What is the typical process for funding for a project this size? Are there potential for grants or things like that, that, that could be applied or, or applied for early for a project, say, if it was decided to do it in three years from now? Or is it typically, for a project like this, is it, does it take all of the street construction away from everything else for two years or whatever?
There may be some grants that, that we could apply for. But those are generally limited. There may be some CDBG type monies that we could look at. This is close to TID seven. We might be able to stretch the definitions a little bit that impacts TID seven, where, where we could charge it against TID seven and get reimbursed from TID five. But a lot of this, you know, they're, they're actually, there are loan programs for water and sewer that we could get, but generally not grants for that. This is a state highway connecting street. And DOT is not participating in this at this time. They don't see any need to, to go in with us at this time. It would be hard.
Okay, and is that specifically with the DOT? Because it's the, the culvert situation that's not part of the highway itself?
That, that's right. You know, the, the culvert is off of the highway, out from under the road. So their, their feeling is that that has nothing to do with the DOT highway.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, that's good, thank you.
Nicholas?
I was just gonna add to what Howard said. To give Kathy and other council members some context is we typically for our annual street reconstruction CIP projects, we have been issuing bonds around one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. So we're, we're talking, you know, something seven to eight times that size. And so without any state help, you know, we would, we would need to take a look at what that would do, that kind of a borrow, what that would do to our debt service requirements and long-range financial planning.
Right. And some of it would be water and sewer. And we haven't, in the nine million, we haven't said how much that would be, but that's rate payers. So, okay. Jason, questions, comments, suggestions?
The questions that I was gonna ask have already been asked, so I have nothing further right now.
Okay, Robin?
You're mentioning DOJ not really being interested in the project at this time. Would they be resistant to the project going under the highway?
I don't know that they would be resistant to it. They're, it's called a connecting highway, which means that for most purposes, it belongs to the city. We would just have to coordinate with them to make sure that we had an official truck detour for, for everybody who would be using that stretch. We'd probably end up having to coordinate and send them on sixty-one or something like that.
Okay. And then just out of curiosity, you said that currently it's sitting on bedrock, but we would be using larger culverts? Would that, we would dig down into the bedrock? Or would the street, would, would it raise up the ground level or what's? I'm sure it's different as you go down the path.
Right, yeah. We were anticipating having to do some rock excavation for all of the utilities, water, sanitary sewer and water main through this. So yeah, we were not raised, we would not raise a grade of Water Street, you know, just to put the box culvert in. I don't think that would work. I don't know if the businesses would appreciate that, having a, having a highway higher than them. So yeah, we've got that cost figured into it.
And then that's choosing the best option. Does anyone still just use the metal culverts? I mean, I understand that they are shorter lasting, but is that kind of off the conversation at all? Or will we be looking at budget compromises later? And what, what items would that be?
Yeah, the, the corrugated metal pipes are still being used, but typically not underneath a, a road or in an area that's being developed. If we were going through an empty field and it's easy to replace, not such a big deal. But I think, even with better metals, better coatings, you still run into the situation that you have now where you're going to have to deal with this in forty or fifty years after it's installed. You know, you can, you could oversize it, knowing that it's not going, it's gonna fail sooner than later. But I don't know, you know, you'd have to put that in your, your lifecycle analysis to find out if that'd be worth it. And I think a project of this size, I definitely think that that's something that would have to be done, is a lifecycle analysis for, you know, one or all options when the time comes. To see, you know, what is going to be better? You know, concrete, metal, in the road, not in the road, that type of thing.
That's all I have.
Ken?
Yes, I have first comment. I commend you for wanting to use concrete, we presented it here. And a nitty-gritty question or two about the concrete. What's the thickness of the concrete gonna be? There'll be heavy trucks as far as traffic, so what's gonna be the thickness?
I have to, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I'm thinking it has an eight or ten inch sidewall on it, if not larger, ten by seven. When we did East Side Road back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, I believe we used a double box culvert there. And Howard, I think those walls, where they were about eight to ten inches wide, is that sound about right?
Yeah, I think you're right. I think those were about eight inches thick. What we do is, is we would classify it by what they call a class. It would probably be what we call class five to, to support heavy trucks as you're requesting. And there are specifications for that. But I, I, I would think that it would be a minimum of eight inches thick, probably ten to twelve. But I, I, I would think that it would be a minimum of eight inches thick, probably 10 to 12.
It's a, it's a precast box section is what we're proposing. So it's gonna be a little bit thinner because it's, it's got a, it's kind of the, the method of construction. Whereas if we were to cast in place, hand form a box cover through there, it would probably be much larger just because of the nature of the construction.
Yes. And then my next question is, what do you put in for reroute? What thickness and spacing?
Normally, they put, actually, on a lot of the precast box sections and even the storm sewers, they use a woven wire fabric. Now, this is gonna be a little bit larger. So they might actually end up putting in some concrete. But a lot of times, it's a, it's either woven wire fabric or it's even a pretensioned wire that they put in there.
They don't use reroute?
I haven't really seen a whole lot of reroute in precast sections, have you, Howard?
No, as you say, it's, I mean, it, it's not chicken wire. It's, it's pretty thick gauge wire, but it's, it's a mesh.
Well, anyway, I'm interested what, what it's gonna be as far as strength. My next question is, the traffic, if you do the whole thing at one time, where is the traffic gonna go as far as Water Street is concerned between Main Street or Pine Street and Business 151? Will there be no traffic at all there? Where is the traffic gonna go?
There would definitely have to be a detour. And that would have to be for probably, I think for some of the phasing, we can make it happen. Once again, I think we'd have to do a cost analysis on it. Water Street is quite wide. You could do it in phases. I mean, phase one could have three phases in it. You put the box covered in, you put the sanitary sewer in, you put the water main in. You, you know, split traffic, you build temporary roads, et cetera. It's gonna come down to cost versus trying to reroute the traffic. I'll say to, worst-case scenario, you run them out to Mineral Street and bring them back in off Mineral Street. Very long detour. I would say majority of people who are local are going, would cut up Virgin Avenue and go down that street, for example. But that could definitely be, you know, that would be an option. And once again, we'd have to definitely look at the difference in cost of trying to do it under construction, keep traffic there during construction, or simply just rerouting them around. Wouldn't you agree, Howard?
Well, the, the local traffic will find its way around, like you say, with either Ellen or Virgin. But I'm thinking that the, through trucks, we would have to coordinate that with DOT and actually push them out onto actual state highways like 61 to get them around this. Because we really don't want 18-wheelers going on Ellen or Virgin or even Mineral Street if we can help it.
Okay, my next question goes back to the beginning of this project where it starts. We've talked about this some already. Why didn't you include anything as far as main, the pine? You're starting at pine and, pine and water. The actual drainage starts, first on the ground, it starts at Main Street.
Actually, it starts at Mineral.
Um, one of the reasons is that with, there's a, the CMP pipe that goes from Pine Street to the fire department. When we walked that, what was that, two years ago, Howard, maybe three years ago? That was in excellent condition. The difference in construction for that one and the material used were much better. No signs of the bottom rusting out. And it's in, it's in, it is in very good condition. So that was one factor. That was probably the main factor, I think. Now, under Main Street and underneath that building, that's on the north side of the building, next to Collins Auto, Bill Collins Auto Body, and Matt Schublin owns it now. That's a different, I mean, obviously, there's some work needs to be done there. But for the majority of it, that, that cover is in good condition.
At the beginning, we learned that, you should park, you rode it away already at the beginning.
Yeah.
I think those are all my questions for the time being.
Howard, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just needed to limit the scope for Dan and his folks. And I just felt that Pine Street at this time, because of the culvert, was at least a stopping point.
Okay, Isaac, questions, comments, suggestions?
Nope, no questions.
No questions. It's a big price tag. Nine million dollars is a big price tag. And I guess I would ask a couple of questions. Back in 2008 or 2009, we got economic stimulus money. And that's how we got in Marquee and the Roundabout by Roundtree Commons. How quick is the, could this project be ready if there were stimulus funds that were made available?
In my opinion, the, the design is not difficult. The difficult part is just the coordination of where to put it and then whether it's gonna be done in one phase or multiple phases. And then what, what the, with the traffic. So it's more of the constructibility of it than designing it. So if, if we had to have something ready in three or four months, we could have plans that were quote-unquote shovel-ready in three or four months. Now, the reality of it is, is that we would probably wanna spend another couple of months, you know, pouring through it and making sure of how are things gonna be coordinated. So this is, you know, this is as much engineering design as in on the construction engineering process of it. Because the box cover itself, once we come up with the size and a location of it, we don't have to worry about actually doing a structural design of it because the manufacturer will do that. We just gotta figure out how to get it from the plant to onsite and into the ground. Which sound easy, but that's difficult. So it's, it's design, designability, drawing up plans, no problem. But actual coming up with the constructibility and how it's gonna get put together, that's gonna take a little bit of time. But, you know, if, if there was, hey, we've got money coming out, let's get something going. There would be time to get the design done and then get the, get that last part figured out.
Okay. Because, I mean, we didn't expect those funds to be available before. But I'm, I'm telling you, if there are funds available, we wanna be first in line. Adam's shaking his head, yes, we, we definitely wanna be first in line. Especially when we have a nine million dollar necessary project sitting out there. So I, I just want us to keep that in mind. The other thing, and I don't know what's best, if it's along the road or through the properties. I am a bit concerned that we have no record of easements at all for any of this. I'm just a bit, I'm, I'm a bit surprised and concerned. I mean, you know, and I don't know if that should be concerning if we're, if, if the preferred alternative is the street.
Right. Yes, if it's the street, then, then the easements would be to get the private storm sewers and public storm sewers into the new box. It's not as bad at that point. My guess is that, you know, I, I wasn't born and raised here, but I, I have a feeling that what ended up happening was, you know, this was an open ditch, you, you know, all the way through. So what ended up happening was property owner A said, oh, there's a culvert going underneath 151. So they said, I need to expand my business, so I'm gonna throw a culvert and attach it to the culvert that's, that the DOT put under the highway, fill over top of it and call it good. And then the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy. And pretty soon, we've got this large culvert all the way through. And really no easement because the individual property owners at the time did their 40 feet or 50 feet, whatever was needed.
All right, well, those were the comments that I had. Jason, anything else?
Not at this time, no.
Ken, anything else on this?
My only thing that I'd like to see is boil it down to a one-page summary of the cost for each of the options. You gave it to them, but I can't remember all the numbers.
Okay. Robin, any other thing? No, you're on mute. No, okay. Eileen, anything?
Nothing.
Kathy, anything?
Nothing more right now.
Isaac, anything?
No.
Adam, I didn't call on you. Do you wanna say anything about this nine million dollar project?
If everybody wants to start playing the lottery now for the next year, that could definitely help us out.
Okay.
I guess, Howard, one of the, one of the questions that I kinda thought of is, is there any potential that some of these businesses would have to assist with the, if we don't have an easement, is it technically our culvert or is it their culvert? I know that's a sticky mess to get into, but that's one question or consideration.
That is one of those things, unfortunately, I think it would be a legal argument.
Right.
Like we were talking about the Edward Jones building. You know, when, you know, the original building developer is no longer here. So do they assume some sort of liability or cost share for it? I don't know, that's a legal and political question.
All right, well, those are all, we have a lot of questions, have a lot of ideas, but we have no, no action to take here. But it's a good thing to start to work on. So, folks, that brings us to the end of the agenda that I see. So without further ado, I would take a motion to allow us all to leave the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to adjourn. Candace, vote.
Shanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Dots?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Folks, we're adjourned. Thank you once again for tuning in and participating. And now go and see a blue M.